To order the zoning board of appeals, law 17th. If you see the record, take a roll call from the left to my right to state your name for the record.
Dan Simon.
Brian Rockoff.
Fred Delash.
Randy Breckman.
Michelle Samarian.
Mark Siso.
Linda Novak.
We have a court, we call a meeting to order, new business before us. Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 25-003. Before we begin, I'd like to just state for the clarification, for people who have not been to the zoning board before, we have a procedure in which the case before us will presented by the billing official as to why it's before us. After we have a presentation of the case, then we'll have a presentation by the applicant stating what he's requesting, why it's, why it needs the particular variance. And after that, we'll have a discussion or an open comment for anybody in the public sector that wants to speak on favor, against it, what have you, and we'll discuss what's been presented as far as any written documents. Following that, we'll have a closing of the public section. Will there be any questions from the board of the applicant and of the billing official? And after we close that session, we'll have a finding of facts on which the zoning board will make their decision. The finding of facts is an open discussion among the board to discuss things and look at things, and then we'll state the listing of the facts on which we'll base a decision. After those finding of facts are confirmed, then we will have a vote and a decision on what the results of this committee are. That being said, I'll turn over the board. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, item number three is your adoption of your agenda. Did you want to grab that first?
New business, no, adoption of agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. So, we have before us tonight the architect for the project for 30958 Woodcrest Court. The zonings are L. The applicant is here tonight to request a variance for a change in grade of greater than five feet over the entire site, and that change of grade would both be fill and cut.
Fill and what, classification?
Fill and...
Brilliant stuff.
Cut, yeah, or we call it cut. It's removing dirt of more than five feet in height, and I'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay.
So, the Village of Franklin ordinance 1268.17, under the building grades, it says that no point on the site shall the combined effect of filling or excavation result in a change of grade of greater than five feet over the entire site. This provision shall not apply to the filling excavation necessary for vehicular access to the site. I did include that as part of the colored drawing part, but that is really not impacted by the variance tonight. They will get to do that anyway.
Okay.
But we'll get to the, I'll finish when we go through and look at the actual site plan submitted. The site plan submitted with the new house application shows numerous areas where there is more than five foot of grade change. Some facts behind the surrounding request is, and if you don't mind, I'm going to stand up and point it on the picture for you, the plan that shows. The site, and I'm not pleading the case, but they kind of do that themselves, but I do want to give you some of the facts behind it. This particular property, high point is here at roughly 836. The low point on the same line happens to be in this area, which is at 794. So, there's basically a 40-foot difference between the lowest part of this land and the highest part. That's a lot of difference on a given particular piece of land, 40 feet. That's like a four-story building. So...
Point out the lowest point, the lowest point.
The lowest point is here.
Is that kind of barren right now? It looks like it's gravel or something.
Yeah, if you go, if you drive in here and look past the weeds, which are going to get cut here real soon, you draw the attention to the owner. If you look over that, there's a low spot, you know, cellophane's all flat, all leaves and that, that is the low spot on the property. Now, that is actually about seven feet lower than the actual road surface right here. So, it drops off down here, then the property raises up a little bit, and then, as you see in the back, it just kind of heads straight to hill. So, this is the end result, and it shows the area where there will be a change in the grade of more than five feet. Another piece of background information, this is about the fourth rendition on this. The first was the house was over here. It had all sorts of grade changes that were worse, so I worked with the architect and engineer, and they kept bringing back, and this is basically for the same size house that they wanted to put on the property, this is probably the least impactful to the property of any location you could find on the site. It's not at the lowest, it's actually not at the highest, but there is significant grade changes to even put the house on the property. So, like I said, I'm not here to plead their case, but I want to give you some facts behind why we're here.
Quick question. The dotted lines are existing and the solid lines are proposed?
Yeah, the faint dotted lines you see on your page are existing grades. The solid lines that you see, like all these solid lines, are going to be the finished grade. So, just to make life easy, because to do this on a piece of paper is quite time-consuming and actually a little difficult to do, but what I do is I take a dark line and I follow it, and every time it crosses one of the dash lines, that's a change in grade. So, whenever that flat dark line crosses more than five of these faint lines, you now have more than a five-foot change in grade, either fill or, in this case, back here, it's cut or excavation. So, because the ordinance takes it from both directions, then I have to do that with every line and then map out where basically that configuration takes place, and then these are the areas of which that happens. And it seems like a lot, but when you look at the topography of this particular parcel of land, it's got a change in grade everywhere. I mean, there's really no place other than this bottom hole that you could find a flat spot on that property, so it is what it is. But this, like I say, this is probably the fourth rendition of the site plan that they worked on to try to get it to be the least impactful. So, with that, that is the case, so the request for the variance would be to allow them to have more than a five-foot excavation or fill. And typically, what we do is, the zoning board has been very good about referencing it to a particular site plan. Now, one other note, as we do this, this plan has been submitted to our engineers, HRC, to verify that they're not going to cause a drainage problem for anybody else. These lines may change a little bit, but I don't see them having any significant impact to where it would stop you from addressing this issue this evening.
Has HRC signed off on it yet?
Not yet. They're working on it, but I, the site was designed by an actual engineer who's been working with HRC on this project, so I'm sure they'll come to a resolution.
Bill, is there an existing well on the property?
No, there was never a well on there.
Where, okay, where will the well be and will the change in grade of that depth or anything else around it?
It won't, really won't impact. I mean, you put a well anywhere, you just have to stay 50 feet away from septic or other wells.
Well, I'm assuming this will be on the sewer.
Septic, it's all pressure sewers.
Well, this one will be on a pressure.
It will be on the pressure sewer.
Yeah.
So, there's a pressure sewer available to the...
Every property in Franklin has availability to pressure sewer. It's easier than others.
Might be a thousand feet, but they haven't, it might be a thousand feet away, but they have it.
That's what I say, maybe not, but they do have access.
Linda, if you look, there's a curved wall, Bill, can you put your finger up at the entryway? Just so...
This?
Yeah, right about where your finger is, there's the well right there, Linda.
Oh, there is.
Oh, I see, water well.
Yeah.
Or that's where the proposed well is going to be.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, that's regulated by the county. I don't really get...
I was just curious.
The permit for wells all come from the health department.
If you're putting in a new one, it's fine. I just was wondering if there was an existing one.
I looked back as far as I could on overheads, and I don't believe there was ever a building on this property.
So, why was there a well?
No, no, it's a new well.
Oh.
Have they ducked it yet? The well?
No.
Then that's just a suggested place, that's not a real place.
The beginning of this project started a little faster than they kept up those ordinancees, because this question's come up too, is they did remove a lot of trees on the site, but they have addressed that issue and they've actually posted a significant bond. But I've been informed by the architect and the engineer that it will have significant replacement vegetation on the land. This is going to be a pretty fancy house, so I'm sure they're going to do the landscaping accordingly.
So, was construction started and then stopped?
No.
But the trees were down?
Yeah.
Because?
Because they were getting, they knew they had an issue with the property, they got the trees out of the way so they could get their grading stuff, but the grading stuff, the way the original plan, it didn't work out the way the ordinance allowed it. Who been working on this? I think my first letter of denial was November of 2024.
Okay.
So...
Thank you, Bill.
Do you have a projection on if dirt, the sum of dirt on or off? Is it going to take new, I see a lot of movement, I mean, there's a lot of fill, but there's a lot of cut. Is it going to be, they're going to be trucking dirt in or taking dirt out?
I don't know, I mean, it's, because there will be a building permit, our ordinance doesn't really address it. We do have a fill and excavation permit, but only, it's only permitted if it isn't related to a building construction.
Got it, okay.
So, that's a question you could ask the architect or engineer. I'm going to guess part of the reason they want this change in grade is to fill some of those low areas with dirt, it sounds like...
Well, yeah, I mean, the basement.
I would want to truck it out and then pay the trucker back.
Well, yeah, I see the basement at 801 feet.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of dirt going to come out of the middle of that.
Yeah.
Bill, there's some discharge. Is that going to just be like a swale or is that going to be a tank that, because it looks like it's going to be...
Right now, it's drawn as a energy dissipator, in other words, a pipe coming up with rocks and stuff that slows the water down, but that's all part of what HRC and the engineers are going to address.
Okay.
And they'll figure out where runoff goes and what that thing's going to do.
Actually, if you look at the land, it will have, even if left the way it is, has a really no significant runoff to other properties. This is all coming up to this property, this is all going uphill to this property. So, the lowest area is here, which is downhill from the street. So, and this is all sudden done, the way it's graded here is that it forward to sheet flow to come down the street and drop into that pond that's over there, which is pretty typical. Now, if it doesn't leave the property at a speed any more than it would if it was just natural, that's pretty much the standard we go by, but HRC, like this, that is the one that's going to verify that with the site engineer.
When will they have their results?
It's up front of the house.
Before they get a building permit, I know that. So, I have no control over the speed of HRC.
Yes, it is.
As I, I looked at the house, I drove by today, and the house, which is the one cloquah, counter cloquah, looks like it's lower than the property, but the map doesn't show that.
This is a silk.
It's not.
Well, from the property line, which is here, this grade goes that way. So, whether this goes that way or not, I have to fight.
No, I'm just curious, because it looks like this house was significantly lower than...
It does look like it.
Didn't it?
But does the driveway connecting that, Rosemont, Paul?
I don't know, there's a gray line, I see a gray line heading out in this direction, and that's this gray line.
Okay, I mean, I just, I looked at this and jogged it where it stopped.
My concern is, how is this running away, whether it's on their property or not? Is there any running to that? And from my perspective and looking at these gray lines, it's not, it's all running back, so...
Okay.
Bill, there's also, I see that they're going to put a new fence up?
That will be addressed, addressed under a separate permit, we have a fencing permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it does show, it appears that it shows the fence in the front, yeah.
Like I say, this is what, the fourth or fifth revision. There, the previous versions may have had some stuff on there that the previous plan was extensive. I mean, it had all sorts of pools and recreational stuff back here, dug out in the middle of the hill, and I don't think that is going to work, so there's significant changes, but any fence will be addressed under separate permits.
And we're just, we're just here to address the...
Grading.
The grading.
Yeah.
Of course. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
You can state your name for the record and we represent.
Good evening, my name is Eddie DeBuch. I'm the architect responsible for this project with ED Design Studio, the address 7720 Kentucky Street, Dearborn, Michigan 48126.
My name's Ali Jawad, I'm the property owner.
Do we start? Please. Okay, so, can I, can I stand? Wherever you like, you know.
So, we're asking for this variance, basically, the five-feet potential variance, because as Ben mentioned, we have a severe slope in the property, the entire property. It slopes almost 42, 42 feet. Our problem is, we want the house, or the building to be at almost 18 feet, 18, like 813 feet, that's the grade, 800, 813, and we have almost an 811 over here, so we have almost 13 feet to go up to the, to the house. That's why we see the new grades going up to the house, so we can reach, reach it from 18, from 800 level to 813 level. Basically, also this area is going to be filled, just to accommodate this approach over here, to get to the house, the first floor, basically.
Are you taking any off this lower corner here? Those, that, that part, is that staying?
Over here?
Yes.
This is, this is where the driveway goes. This is, this is going to be filled in the back, or entirely, this is going to be cut. We have a retaining wall of eight feet.
A wall of what?
A retaining wall.
Okay.
How tall is the retaining wall?
I'm sorry?
How tall is the retaining wall?
Almost eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight feet from the, from, from, from the back of this level over here, so we can get to this, so we can, we can, we can actually build this.
I think so it supports the driveway.
That's to get in the garages there.
Yes, that's where the garage is, it's an attached garage, so that's the garage, it's just the driveway coming this way.
815, 880 here.
You're saying set eight feet back from the driveway, not eight feet.
Eight feet tall.
It's not, so when you reach this, this, this point over here, it's not actually eight feet tall, but the thing is, because, because we're going up, I just don't know, I can't see the grade over here, because we're going up to eight, that's this, this point over here, our new grade is eight ton, and the grade over here is going to be eight, 17, basically.
Okay.
So, to hold this, this ground over here, we have to build this retaining wall.
Okay.
And the reason for the front, right, so that we don't have a bunch of steps?
Sorry, can you speak up a little?
No, I was just, I was, I think the reason for the frontage too, for the fill, is so that way you don't have to walk up like all steps, so the driveway could slope, is the reason for the front.
Because if we, if we keep this the same way it is, it's going to be, basically, it's messy. We have, we have, we have a lot of low levels and high levels at the same area over here, and going on the, going up the driveway, if you want to take this up here and want to make, want to make like stairs or something, it's, we're going to have a lot of retaining walls to cover this area, so we slope the whole thing, so we can have less dislocation.
Is there a retaining wall in the front driveway?
No, none, none, over here, there's none, it's only this, only retaining wall.
Nothing behind the house, beyond that corner?
No retaining wall, that's the one that we're taking.
Over here?
Yeah.
There's nothing, the, the ground, the ground's all just sloping naturally, we're not, we're not playing with the, we're not playing with the grading over here, it's all existing grades, we only have this part, and then we have this retaining wall.
What's this part you just pointed to, the straight lines?
That's, that's where our, basically, the back.
Okay.
So, we're making it to the, it is sloping, but a shallow slope, so we're just playing with the grid a little bit over here, so we can have a smooth transaction.
It's not more than five feet, therefore, then, when it didn't fall into the programmed area where there is more.
What's that other square area down in the rectangle?
That's just a seating area, seating area.
Okay.
It's like a pool building.
Potential fire pit.
Fire pit.
And the plan for the back of the property is to put all new big healthy trees to help cover up and privacy for the neighbors and myself.
We're, we're going to be replacing most of the trees, like, actually, all the trees, of course.
I've been in contact with Kay too, she's, I saved her.
You say you're saving the trees?
No, he said replacing the trees. I said, I've been in contact with Kay and kind of gave her a good idea, and she's been really responsive too. She was just waiting to take the next steps after this meeting.
For visual reference, can you show me where the tree line is now, roughly?
What size?
The tree line that's existing today, just so I can, for reference.
Just around the perimeter, basically, it's gone.
There are no trees, there are no trees on the property, they took them all out.
Yeah.
From the middle, but I had them all tagged, private, but I didn't know there was another step that I should have took after that, but I got the proper steps, so I didn't try to hide any.
I just, so I can visualize that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so right now, it's just border, basically, but they're not even that healthy of trees, so I obviously want to keep the ones who are healthy, but then put new healthier trees around.
So, the trees I see there now are, are property line trees?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
With a couple still.
Okay, that was all I was trying to figure out, was location.
Yeah, because we were higher, you couldn't even walk into, I don't know if you remember how it was, it was just straight, yeah.
And the property has been vacant, vacant for a long time, there was no previous houses or buildings on the property.
So, it was hard to tell how bad the grading situation actually was.
Okay.
Yeah.
With such a slope, are you not concerned about the big rain, that it kind of come, be coming down right at your home?
I think the way he initially kind of designed the house was that when that, if that, if that does happen, the way the house kind of sits center, that the rain should evenly split and like how Bill said, kind of work its way at a rate at a, at a good speed to the, to the pond or...
And we also have, we're going to have foundation drainage and everything, that's going to take care of excess.
So, Bill, they got permission to cut all the trees down?
They didn't get it the way they should have, but they have posted a significant bond. We have, we have a significant amount of money in the tree fund right now until he replaces the trees according to the ordinance. So, he's, he's satisfied the bond requirement, he just got a little ahead of the game, so...
And prior to, sorry, prior to taking any trees, I had them all tagged and identified and full tree report with an arbitrator too.
We actually have a tree survey with an Excel sheet of all the trees.
And the condition of the trees.
He's been working with our arborist on, on that issue, so...
So, the only house that I see on here that could potentially be, unless I'm missing the other homes, is the one on Rosemont Lane? That would be the one that's...
Is it, is it?
Yeah.
That's not even going to be impacted in any way?
It's not?
No.
Because the slope is going this way?
Yeah.
And this way?
Okay.
Yeah, there will be no water runoff from this property to that property.
Okay.
It will run into the turnaround though.
I know, to 13.
But, but, okay, so the, the state has a law that's called the special flow doctrine, and what it says is if the water falls from the sky and it flowed a certain way, which that did, flowed toward that cul-de-sac, and it continues to flow toward the cul-de-sac after you do any improvement, it's okay. All we do, or all I do, is make sure that it flows to that point at a rate that doesn't exceed what would happen if the property was never developed. Now, you have a certain amount of area that's non-permeable, so those non-permeable surfaces, the water will run off faster. It's, it's still the same amount of water, it just gets from here to there quicker than if it was permeable. So, what HRC is working with the engineers on is to know how they're going to control the speed of that water that's going to end up in that cul-de-sac, because that's where it goes now.
What is the non-permeable ratio right now, as this stands?
Ah, he did it at some 22.
You have, it's on the bottom.
Yeah, we have almost 22.
22, okay, is it on, I know it's on somewhere, because I...
I'm looking at this little tiny one, I wish my eyes were that good, but I do see it now.
Trust me, I, we would have got this far if I had.
I know better than that.
As we mentioned before, we've been through this like four times, we even redesigned the layout of the site plan. We get a lot of comments from them, and we address all of them, basically.
So, there's no sports courts or anything?
Well, if there's one, it's one tab.
Is this the only one from out to...
Up there, up on the hill.
Still not occupied, is it?
And there's nothing in here, because that's swamp.
He's thinking about something.
Oh, I remember.
If it ran off this way.
Quick question, what's the shaded area?
Which one? Falls off down here.
Uh, concerted this area here?
Concrete around the pool.
No, it goes all the way down here.
804.
Concrete around the pool.
That's the area where the grain changed.
So, starting, water goes this way.
That's what Bill kind of tied up.
Oh, oh, so the...
But they're talking about it running down the cul-de-sac.
Got it, okay.
Isn't that concrete though?
That's where the grain is.
Concrete around the pool.
It was going down in this area here.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
So, on there it's yellow, but on here it's shade. God, I was confused, sorry.
Well, I don't have the capabilities to do what he did in the shading on this, I took a highlighter and did it, so, yeah.
Okay, no, just, I was just curious what it was.
It's pretty much the same place.
Okay.
I'm not here to say...
The architects just have fancier gadgets than I do, mine's a highlighter, so...
You're kicking at old school.
Hey, you know, old school works good.
Old school doesn't work.
Yeah.
So, Bill, for reference, I'm looking at 309, 309, 200, 30920 Woodcrest, the house up at the top.
Yeah.
It looks like that has the same grade change as this is proposed, it looks like that goes from 800 to roughly 812.
But it's on a plateau at the top of the hill, this, this has no plateau anywhere.
Well, but they're making a plateau.
Yes, well, they need to to put a house on it, yeah.
Well, no, but my, my point is that...
Is there a lot of stilts?
The reference is the same. It's about the same slope that will be the end result.
So, it's good.
But, yeah, but the thing is, it's a shallower slope, if you, if you, if you look at the grading over here, these gradings are congested over here in our project.
When the grant lines are tight.
I'm looking at here, from this house to the road, from this house to the road, it's about the same grade.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah, basically, it's the same.
Okay.
So, you're bringing most of this in then, and cutting a smaller percentage of it and bringing the majority of the fill?
Yes, because we're, we're mostly filling this here.
Yeah.
So, we can slope towards the house.
That's your basement.
Well, yeah.
I think for your basement will be piled in front.
We have five feet of the basement exposed.
I'm just saying, you...
Five feet of basement exposed on, on...
On this, this area, on the front.
Oh, wow.
Everything else is, basically, just...
Basically, just like window design.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could add one more piece into your puzzle and school of thought?
Sure. Sure.
Um, this particular part of the ordinance you'll notice is at the end of section one, two, six, eight, point one, seven. If you recall, well, if you, first, if you look at the date down at the bottom of that particular section of the ordinance, it says two thousand and five. Now, I hate to admit it, but I was here in two thousand and five and I'm one of the ones that promoted this be put into the ordinance. This was based on a house up on thirteen that there was a flat piece of land. The guy built the basement on it and then trucked a bunch of dirt in to make a walkout.
Yeah.
And then I took it to the planning commission, the planning commission, and of course, the zoning board had to deal with, I mean, look at it. And between the two, they thought, that's really not a good plan on an overall. So, this particular property has a major grade issue. They're not forcing something to be something it's not. They're just trying to use it for what it is.
Make it usable.
So, uh, I just thought I'd throw that in there, that the basis behind this ordinance was for a totally different reason than what the applicant's here to request the variance for.
So, if I'm understanding it correctly, they're just trying to build it up to be similar to what the house just above is like. So, if the end result will be more similar to that property, even though that had more of a natural plateau, they're trying to recreate.
Uh, according to Brian, he, they're at the same elevation, so I guess in essence, they're going to look basically at the same height.
Yeah.
They just have a little bit more severe grading to play with to get it to look that way. So, yeah, there'll, there'll be a lot of similarities between the two as you drive down the street.
So, just save the higher grade in the back. It's not to do with building the house, uh?
Yeah.
I, I wish we can push the thing to the front a little bit. I wish, I wish we can, uh, push the building a little bit to the front, but then we have the setbacks.
Yep.
We're, we're at the setbacks. So, we have a fifty feet setback from the front of the property to the, to the, to the house.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, if we push it a little bit to the front, maybe this would cover a little bit of the grading, but, uh, that's where the setback is.
The ordinance makes us a real numbers game in many ways. You have a height limitation for the building. You have setbacks. You have great change of rules and trying to work with properties that have extreme slopes. It, it, it is nothing but a real numbers game to make it all fit and still be able to build what you would like to build. But.
Is the low part of the property at all a wetlands or anything?
No.
It's not, okay. So, we're not dealing with eagle.
That's checked also during the process.
Just asking, just asking.
I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad I have an answer for you.
It's wetlands if you consider gravel wetlands.
Well, okay, fair enough. Just, we had another property that did have a little piece of it that eagle.
Bill, have you ever seen this property when it's raining? Seen where the water goes and stuff?
No, but at this point in time, I can't imagine it leaves the property at all because of that low area out front that has no vegetation. I'm gonna guess it all ends up there because there's not a lot of vegetation in that area.
The house to the, what, east side of that seems to be in a low area as well.
The Finney's house, well, it was the Finney's house years ago. Somebody else has bought it and they put an addition on it, but they had, um, some grading issues because that pond that's on their property was actually closer to that house than what it is today. But, um, that, that's all on a separate piece and that's all the way it is. Matter of fact, when they redid the drainage along Thirteen Mile, that pond almost, almost dried out totally a couple of years ago. And as much as people don't necessarily like water on their property, they don't like dried up spots either, so.
Cause water will come back to it? Cause water will come back to that point, at some point.
It has, to a point, yeah. But not anywhere near where it was in the past.
Yeah.
So, but they've done, uh, the road commission's done significant work along Thirteen Mile too, so.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Where, where is thirteen, as this stands?
Uh, farther up the page, about a half mile.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's only two houses on this, well, three.
Halfway up the roof.
Right. Got it, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, uh, it'll probably comment. If there is any public comment, anyone who'd like to make a comment. Please step forward and state your name and address for the, for the record, please.
Laura Siegel. I live at three zero eight five zero Rosemont Lane, which is directly across from the Finneys there. Uh, I guess, you know what? We were all really severely traumatized by the rape of this property indiscriminate. Uh, how many trees did you cut down? I mean, they were huge trees, hundreds of them. There had to be. Some of them, it was so unneedlessly cut down that would never be part of, because of the slope and where they were, never be part of, of this project. But, um, it was really horrible. My light fixtures suffered damage and these trees would be just falling down. They're Italian, you know, Murano glass, but what am I gonna do? How am I gonna prove that? Anyway, it was really terrible, what you did. Really bad. Without permission, just wantonly at night, in the evenings, on the weekends, whatever, he had these people in there just felling these trees. It was, it was horrific. Anyway, that said, I am also the victim of poor grading decisions at the Finney, former Finney property because they got a, a distance from the road variance and a height variance, but they also illegally at night on the weekends, whatever, had this guy come and grade the property and raise it. And that was before we had the current, uh, building officials, but I have flooding now. And the bottom line is, you know, you can't control nature. This house is in a pit. It's, it's like this. And without, I don't know how many, what they're gonna plant. I hope they're not all evergreens. I hope whatever is they plant is dense and will take up water. I haven't really studied what's happened in the recent rains over there, cause it makes me sick to go over there and see the destruction, but, um, you know, all these retaining walls. I mean, I have retaining walls in my house that are just landscaping and they don't last forever. You know, I have dead men with all kinds of concrete and bolts and all this stuff. There's gonna be, I mean, it's not gonna be my problem. He's gonna have flooding in his garage, flooding in his basement, flooding in his house, probably. It's a, it's a pit. It's like this. And anyway, it, it, you know, I know he has the right to build there, but I just think that the drainage issues really need to be addressed. I don't know where this pond you're talking about is, this retention pond, if it's over on the Hughes's property there. Is that, you keep talking about a retention pond, and it's, it's far away and it's uphill, so I don't know how the water's gonna go there. The other houses there are significantly higher, um, so that water's gonna run down the non-permeable driveway and, and road surfaces there. But where, where's this pond that you guys are talking about?
At Thirteen Mile.
Okay. So, that's really far away. How's that water gonna get there?
Down the street.
So, it's gonna run down Woodcrest Court?
Correct.
On the road. That's a hazard. Right? Can we see cars get swept away by rushing water?
No, I explained a minute ago, and Mr. Chair, I'll answer this if you wish.
Yes, please.
As I said a little bit ago, HRC is going to make sure that the water that leaves that property will not leave at any more speed than what it does today. So, if it hasn't been flooding today, then it's not gonna flood in the future. That's part of the design process.
Does it currently drain in the Hughes's pond? I don't think so.
If you get over to the one corner of that property, it does. Right now, a lot of it goes over here to this low area.
I'm sorry, can you show me where you're talking about? Anyway, it's, it's, you know, there's, there's gonna be issues with drainage.
That's why we're having.
Right, right, right. Exactly. So, I don't know why, I don't know why we're here before HRC's had a chance to opine. But it doesn't go all the way to their pond. There's no way it can go over there.
No, but one of those that was slowly coming across here, down the street, that's, but naturally, if you're doing it to buy.
That's lower.
Almost everything's heading that way anyway. This is heading this way. That's the point of having our engineers involved, so it doesn't.
So, so why wouldn't this take place after the engineers have made their analysis? I don't.
I don't believe it's gonna change the grading on the site, that.
So, they're gonna build, um, underground pipes to make it go over? And, and do the Hughes's have anything to say about all this additional water going over to their property?
No, because it will be put out into the road right away.
Woodcrest?
Yeah.
Where does it go from there? It's non-permeable. Where does it go?
To the pond.
Pond. Okay, anyway, I, I don't think there's much I can do, but I guess just urge you guys to be careful because the impact of this stuff is forever.
Yeah, cause they're not changing this.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't read my numbers.
No, that's all.
At this point, I'd like to close public comments if, since there are no more people participating. And I'd like to move on to finding of facts in which the board will make a decision. Well, first, let's have any discussion among the, among the board here of what you're, any other comments or questions? Either the applicant or a bill?
I guess my question is, if you take a piece of property that's been vacant and left natural forever, um, and you look at the drainage from that, and then you displace that with a structure of how many square feet?
The footprint.
I'm sorry, how big?
The footprint, uh, so the first floor is around five thousand square.
And how many levels is it?
Uh, basement, first and second.
Okay, so it's ten thousand square feet above grade and another five thousand.
No, 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 no. It's, it's all, overall, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
About three and change.
Five and five is.
It's not, no, so it's not, it's not really like, um.
So, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just obviously not, you know, a professional at this. I'm just thinking about, you know, displacement and the weight of a house of that size where before it was filtering differently, and I'm just wondering in my own head, how is that not affected? Right? Cause honestly, the other thing I'm thinking about is the water going out Woodcrest and coming out on the main road and, you know, ponding and drainage and erosion from that. I, I, I'm just, I'm only asking the question. I'm not trying to be the bad.
And I'll try to help you understand it, okay? The non-permeable surface does have water runoff at a faster rate than the permeable surfaces. In other words, if the water can soak into the ground, it's not gonna run off, okay? The roof, the driveway, the sidewalk and that, that water that hits that is going to be drained somewhere, okay? So, now, what HRC and the site engineers are doing is determining how they're going to take that water and slow it down before it gets to Woodcrest, to leave Woodcrest at the designed rate of non-developed land at that same volume speed, okay?
So, there will be some kind of underground drainage system?
There may be an area where they're gonna have a retention area. They may retain it. And they'll put a weir in a pipe that only allows so much water to go out. That doesn't exceed the amount that would go that way if it was just natural land.
It just seems like that would be something that they would do before we said, sure, go ahead and grade it and take everything down. Until engineering.
Yeah, this is, so this way we can agree that the house is in a good spot.
Okay.
Yes.
And then they have to give the next okay, then we can hopefully go to it.
I think it would've been helpful if we had some of those reports about the water prior to making this decision.
Well, then, you wanna table this until HRC's done? I guess that's what you have the right to do that.
But this helps.
But I don't see that not, not dealing with this today is going to change the final outcome on this property. I've dealt with enough properties around to know how this, I mean, it looks and seems like it could be bad, but it's not as bad as what you may think it is.
Do, do you have a plan for the replacement of trees?
Not yet. He's working, he just said he's working with Kate, our arborist, right now for, to put the appropriate trees back. Trust me.
Twice?
We've got.
She wants this okay and then take the next step.
And he's got a lot invested, cause we got over eighty thousand of his dollars. We're holding until that happens. Just so that may give you a little bit more of a warm, fuzzy feeling, okay? So, we've addressed the tree issue. But the drainage issue, if you look at the grate lines, and actually, Brian brought it up, the house next door has a similar height. The house next door has a similar drop to Woodcrest. The house next door is roughly the same distance away. So, this house will have really no more water runoff heading that direction than does the house next door, and the house next door is not creating a problem on Woodcrest. I don't know that. I haven't heard anybody complain, but I've been here twenty-three years, so.
If they wouldn't have removed all the trees they did, would that have helped change the slo, the speed as they, the water coming out of there?
No. It, what changes the speed of the water runoff isn't necessarily the vegetation, although it does impact it a little bit. What impacts the speed of the water runoff is the non-permeable surfaces. The driveway, the roof, the sidewalks, anything where the water can't soak into the ground or be slowed down by vegetation, that water is just gonna head off. So.
Just to add a comment about the tree situation, just, oh, just to add a comment about the tree situation. The city has the full health report of all the trees and the majority were in poor or dead condition. And then as the city, a couple of, maybe months ago, sent out a letter to all the residents that, uh, some of the branches were kinda, like, making the trees kinda kill each other. So, the, the, the city arbitrator also agreed when I sent her pictures, that's what was happening. Basically, all right here, the branches on the trees were all like basically kinda overlapping and weighing each other down.
Did the arbiter, did the arbiter see this before you cut the trees down?
No.
No. Well, she understood.
How can he make comments on the trees that are in the trunk? He didn't see it?
No, but she's seen the pictures of the branches weighing each other down. And then there was a couple storms that we had over the years, cause I'm on the property. So, a huge tree back here. I sent Kate pictures too. You could see all the roots, so it's not like I pulled it out, but then, and then that fell and then knocked down like two other ones and made them all kinda lean and kill each other.
But the arbiter's made a decision without seeing the previous situation?
Well, she not, well, the point, well, if the house goes there, then we can't have the trees, and as long as I replace the trees where she wants them, we both agreed that, we put healthy trees is better than dead trees.
If the arborist didn't see it before, how does she know to?
There's aerials.
Oh, no, no, she.
There's a lot of stuff they can do through aerials.
Was that part of the tree study that was done?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just saying that the arborist said she's going to replace it with similar trees, but if she had not seen the trees that were taken down, how do we know?
And that, but our, our reason for being here is change of grade, not tree problem, because the tree problem is being handled administratively.
I apologize. I take that question back.
But I do think it shows that we, we weren't thorough enough to follow the project all the way along.
Okay, but we're, we're at a point now where they have, and that's why they're here, because this is a part that they did address ahead of time, and this is where it doesn't meet the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
One last one. I did tag, I tagged and identified every single tree prior to taking one down. So that's why the city has the full list and count and health report prior to touching anything.
Thank you.
Yeah. And they're all, we have another site plan that identifies every tree prior to taking. So that's how they, they, the arborist knows what's missing and what's there. Because she overlaid both reports.
Yeah, there was a tree study.
Yeah, no, yeah. I had the tree study done prior to touching anything. So like I didn't...
And there was one done in front.
Yeah. Exactly.
Thank you.
Because I got a cleanup approval, which I needed those documents for, so I identified everything. But what I messed up on is I removed them before sending this to you guys. But I didn't like try to hide something and pretend there weren't trees there. That's all.
Yeah, so, not being an expert, and you are, and this seems like a pretty complicated project. But you've studied it and you feel that it's all right. I get it. To do...
I, I'm still waiting pending what HRC is going to do. But I, in my mind, do not believe they're going to make significant change to that area in the, in result of the drainage from this site. If they do impact it, if it's within that yellow area, that's what they're here to get a variance. If you grant it and it's in that yellow area, I, I feel comfortable that they're going to be able to do that. Okay? If it's outside of that yellow area, we'll be back to see you. But I don't see that happening on this site with that report.
So at this point, as far as you can determine, this plan looks good, it looks workable, it looks like it's...
It's workable, it probably needs some tweaking, but it...
Why wouldn't we want to grant it?
What?
Why wouldn't we want to grant a variance at this point?
No, that's for this board to decide, not a building official.
I don't make that decision.
No, that's not his comment, please.
Bill? We've had other ones. Do we, should we put in there to build to, to the site plan we see now?
When you grant a variance, you grant it to allow certain things. If you make it pending this plan, that doesn't mean that every grade line within that yellow area has to be right at that point. But you've allowed that area marked in yellow or shaded to have the grade change five feet either cut or fill.
In excess of five feet.
Yeah, in excess of five feet. If it's five feet or less, they don't even have to be here.
What are the potential problems that, that this grade change could cause?
I'm not sure, because I don't see a big drainage problem on this site. You know, it's a very wide lot. It, it's got a lot of place that the water can dissipate. The soils, as I understand, at this point in time, there's a lot of sand that is on that site. Sand doesn't have water drain away, it soaks in.
Is this one of the sandy sites?
It's mixed.
Just, my question is, you know, I, I understand that what we're being asked to do is to approve this, but it is conditioned on the report.
Yes, it is.
From Water Resource, so...
HRC.
I, I need it, I'm sorry, HRC.
You don't need to condition it on that. When they come back with their report, if it doesn't fall within what you're granting, we'll be back. But I'm convinced it's going to be within that area and not impacting any more than it is today. Matter of fact, the worst that happens on HRC's end, and this is why I came to this conclusion, and I brought it to you before we actually had their document in hand, was if that site has more water that leaves it than is acceptable to HRC, what they're going to make them do is dig a hole, hold onto that water, and release it at a slower rate.
Put the driveway.
So the worst that's happening is they're going to...
Make it put a pond in.
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to make, it's not going to make the issue of water running down Woodcrest any worse than what it is today. I'm convinced of that.
Hey, you guys have a nice place where pond, right where it says HRC.
It's tardy dug. Actually, if they put it over there, they probably don't need a variance for that area, because that area is part that's going to get filled in, not dug out. So, that, that's why I'm convinced that when we're all said and done here, that some of that variance area probably didn't need to have a variance on it. But, you know, the, the, the end of the story is when HRC gives us their report.
Yeah.
So, I have a question.
Thanks, go ahead.
So why wouldn't we want to, given that we, this gentleman is an expert and we're not, and we hopefully will trust his opinion, why would we want to override that opinion? Is there a reason that we want, we think we're smarter than he is?
No, that is the question. The question is, the decision of, of granting a variance lies with this board, not with the building official. And we do not rubber stamp his opinion. Is that simple?
But I guess, I ask the question because I, I was wondering if there's an answer of why, in other words, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we accept his opinion?
Well, if we just rubber stamped his opinion every time, there's no point in having his board. We just let him grant the variance they want.
But there must be reasons why sometimes we wouldn't.
It depends on the case. It stands on, every case stands alone on it. Okay?
And, and John, we have to remember is that any decision that we make does not just impact this property. It impacts all other properties going forward. It becomes a precedence, or, so...
To a certain extent, yeah.
To a certain extent, but there have been other issues.
Yes.
That we have heard in the past, that things that seemingly were going to be okay caused great distress between neighbors.
See, that's what I meant, so you're...
So, we, we have a duty to weigh what could happen, you know, and, and of course, we respect Bill's opinion. But we also have a responsibility to the public that we need to...
In granting a variance, you try not to set a precedent that obliterates the variance. And, you know, that comes out in the finding of facts of what we base our decision on. And there's so many properties in the village there, it's not a, it's not a cookie cutter village. It's not a flat plain and everybody's got a three quarters of an acre, a straight line, they all face north. It doesn't exist here. So that's why we have a lot of complicated things before the zoning board. Because we have a set of ordinances and we have to allow building and things to go on and home improvements within the guidelines that we have, without throwing the guidelines out the window, without throwing the ordinance out the window. That's why we've got height limitations on a house and then, you know, different variances and requirements and setbacks. And, you know, as he mentioned, he would have liked to put the house closer to the road. But he has to have a setback, which is required by the village. And that's what makes it fair. You can't just do what you want to do and all of a sudden, our village would look a whole lot different than it does. That being said, I'd like to close. Is there any other questions, discussions? I'd like to go on to finding of facts for, on which we'll base our decision.
Finding of facts is not a, made by the appellant? Because of the style of land?
Which, I think what you're saying is this is not a...
It's a challenging lot. The topography.
The topography is not the fault of the owner of the property.
Right, okay.
But it's, it's, it's given. The topography was there. And finding a fact might be that the, the movement of the ground is intended to provide a level, a level space in which to build a house.
Okay.
Finding a fact, the house's footprint is well within the setback designated setbacks per ordinance? Finding a fact, there are areas of grade that appear to be in excess of, of five foot fill?
It's in the RL district. Finding a fact, the grade on this property varies over 40 feet.
Front to back, yes.
Front to back.
Finding a fact, the grade on, the proposed grade does not exceed, or, or, I'm trying to think of the right word, is not excessive when compared to the property at...
It's some of the other properties, the surrounding properties.
Good enough?
You don't want to come.
Yep. You can, it's okay. Finding a fact, we're, this is pending HRC's review?
And proposal.
And comment?
Review, comment, and approval.
That should be probably part of your motion, not necessarily a finding of fact. Well, then the finding of fact is HRC's comment is not, has not been presented today. Not completed as of the date of this hearing. Isn't there a better way to do that?
Finding a fact that the proposed coverage is within code at 22.8%.
Finding a fact, the homeowner has put a large bond into the, built into the tree fund?
That's not relevant.
Yeah. It's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue, I'd rather not have it in our minutes or comments.
I have documentation that you could add to your finding of facts that this site has been redesigned numerous times and that this proposal in front of you is the least impactful of all the designs that have been submitted. And I have documentation in my records that you can review to make that one of your findings of fact.
So it was considered before the person ever built the house?
We've been over, no, no, this same guy brought this in four different times before I ever brought it to you. Has this, I know you said, sorry, a little ADD set moment. You said that this has never been developed and that we've been able to discover. Correct. So that's a finding of fact, that this is the first development on this house, on this property. Were there, just a curiosity point, were there permits or any attempt to build on it before? There's been no permits on this property. Ah, he's ready with that answer.
I can just give you a little history. It actually used to belong to one of the Red Wings players in the 90s, one of the Russian guys, and then left the team and lived in Russia, and then just recently sold it and I bought it. That's why it was never planned to develop.
So, way, way back in, he never did anything that we know about?
No, because I think the year after he purchased it, he got cut or he moved back to Russia.
But he owned, he owned it before the current...
Yeah, for the whole 25 years or probably long.
I was on Property Gateway and I back, I went back into the 1960s and it showed vacant property then.
Okay.
So, prior to 1960, I can't tell you what was there, but that's the last picture they have available.
One thing that is difficult for me, just because we spent hours talking about it last night in planning, is that if we approve the grading on this pla, this plan as is, there is a fence in the front yard, which...
A fence is under a separate permit, you're not approving...
I, I understand, but if we're...
Okay, you're not approving the plan.
Okay, I just...
You're granting a variance for the yellow area.
Grade change.
Yeah.
Right, but the, on this plan that we are approving, it is showing a fence in the front yard.
Finding a fact, we're looking at a print that was received May 1st, 2025, and the file number on it, so that we have a record of specifically what plan we're approving.
Yes. That also probably should be included in your motion, whatever your motion is. That references a plan, a date, or a number to a specific.
Right. Eddie, you want to say anything further?
I have no further. We move with quote.
Well, I have a quick question to your point. So what we're approving is the variance to, to do the grading. But that's not, but it's not necessarily specific to, well, it is specific to this plan, but the plan could change, so that means like the permeable surfaces could potentially change, the fencing could change, and all of that could potentially...
You're not approving the grading. The, the denial came to you because the plan shows areas where there is more than five foot of fill
Yes, yes.
or excavation.
The variance.
So that plan that shows that is the area you're approving, the rest of it you're, you are not giving any approval to.
Or denial.
That's my job, okay? And, not that you're taking my job, but that's issues I deal.
You might bring it back, you might bring it back to us.
We don't want it.
You might bring it back to us, you're saying.
If it changes from what is on there, and it, and it, and it doesn't meet the ordinance, it will be back to see you, yes.
Or something else.
I, I have a question. So by granting, by us granting this variance, does that mean from then on, any, any, any property in Franklin could potentially use that?
No, no, it's, it's, you look at the part of, part of finding of facts, we talk about the, the grade, the uniqueness of the property, the coverage he has, he's within the setbacks, and that the property itself is unique in its shape and its, and it's great, and what has to be done to it. Now, if someone found an exact duplicate of that property and wanted to do the exact same thing, it'd be hard for us not to allow it. But if they want to use eight feet, eight feet of variance versus five, no, that's a different story. If they want to use four feet, they, they may have a leg to stand on to do it, but typically not. Because each, each part of the village is so different, so unique in the shape of the property, that we should put in there, it's, it's not a, a typical square lot, it's not a rectangle lot. As findings of fact, it's an odd shaped lot at the end of a cul-de-sac.
And then it is your finding of fact. It's an irregular shaped lot on the end of a cul-de-sac, which makes it unique by itself.
Yeah.
With challenging topography. Yeah.
Can, can we make in the finding of fact that at no point on the site, just what it says in here, shall the combined effect of filling or excavation result in a change of greater than five feet over the entire site?
Well, that's what you're granting a variance for, or not. What are you, I'm not predisposing that you will, however, I'm just saying that, that's why you're here.
They're asking for a variance of greater, allowing, allowing more greater, greater than five feet. Because they are, they are asking for that.
You don't have to make that a finding of fact when it's what you're here for.
Okay, okay, you're, that's, okay, I got it.
But the fact is, it is an irregular shaped lot at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Have we got that one in, you just added that one? So John, maybe to help clarify what I think your question is, if somebody come in with even a similar lot that was in the R1 zoning, that automatically changes the story. Because this is RL zone. You know, it, the, the comment that Linda made earlier, there, there are some things you can do that could establish a precedence. But it, it's very difficult to make every lot be the same as another lot someplace. Another lot could have a 40-foot grain change, but it's not at the end of the cul-de-sac. So now you don't have the same situation again. You have similar situation, but you don't have the same. So it, it is true, you need to be careful that you just don't arbitrarily issue a variance, because it could set a precedent, but it's really tough to make that precedent fit all the other situations. Does that help you understand that better? I'm sorry, Randy, I didn't mean to jump in, but I think it might be helpful there.
Thank you.
Finding a fact that there no immediate abutters had public comment? Yes, the one lady was here and she lives. Yeah, I was trying to figure out where she was.
She's in, she's, I think she has a corner of his property.
She's on Rosemont.
I think she's here.
No.
Does the other, keep going.
Yeah, she's up there.
No, she's here, yeah, because she complained.
Here she...
No, she's here, yeah, because she complained, I, I shouldn't pre-determine, but she's already been in to talk to me a couple of times, right?
Yeah, I just did-
I may seem to have been a little sharp with her, but I've been over this with her numerous times, okay? And I apologize if I was, but she's mad about what happened with this house. And I think she's taken her frustration out over here a little bit.
Well, I'm just, I'm confused now. So where do you think she is?
She's here, yes, this is her driveway right here, see this?
Okay, all right, I was trying to figure, I was trying to figure out where-
And every time it rained, this driveway rained, it was all, it was up in her front yard. I, I get her being concerned, because this, this is a driveway that comes from the property. That driveway is basically flat, it doesn't really go from one way or another. And all of this is going downhill that way, it's, it's just not going to impact her enough.
Is that her driveway? That long one?
This is Benny's driveway.
Okay.
Well, it's Hughes now, Benny's own, now it's Mr. Hughes.
So she's over here somewhere.
But she's over here.
She's right where Bill's from.
Huh?
Yeah, she's right over here, boy.
Yeah, she's over here.
She's right-
Why don't she just get in, remind her of her house, I've been there before.
Isn't it the short house with all like the-
The white one that gets all covered, she's elevated up actually.
Oh, is that the one right behind, that's like low, all like the greenery covered around it?
No, she's the one next door, she's actually-
She's even further back?
Yeah. So. She's a white contemporary.
I know what you're talking about, further back behind though.
A little bit, not far.
I'm the greenery one, yeah, but not far. Two houses.
Yeah.
So she was not for this, but I don't think she wasn't for this for the reason that they're here. She's just not happy because of what's transpired.
Because of the cutting.
Well, the trees, yeah. And then, I think she's concerned that she's going to have a water problem from here, because she had a water problem from the people across the street. But, well, at first that house was built before my time, so I didn't have any input into it. But I don't see that anything that's being done on this property is going to impact her property at all.
No water's still in the flow, okay?
Yeah, exactly. You know, the people of Franklin, they can't get that concept. Sorry.
Okay, I make a motion that we consider the proposed finding of fact-
Excuse me, oh, the finding of facts, is that what you're doing?
This is the finding of fact. Make a motion that we consider the finding of fact, the, the-
On which to base the decision.
There you go. Whatever he said.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're looking for a motion concerning our-
I make a motion that we approve the request for variance for this case to allow greater than five feet of cut or fill on this property for the plan provided?
Based on the above findings of fact?
Correct.
And based upon a positive rule from Hubble, Roth, and Clark, considering the water permits, water runoff, drainage, and that reference the, this particular site plan that was submitted to us.
File number two, four, one, three, two, PPO one.
Yeah, that one.
Thank you. I move to a second.
I'll, 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 okay.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're on to the next step.
Tread lightly. Did we accept the motion minutes from the last meeting?
No, we've not discussed that yet. We have, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from April seventeenth. If there's any modifications or comments?
I move we accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries.
Since I'm, since I seem to be the motion maker today, I move for adjournment?
I'll second that one.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's closed.